We'll call a meeting to order. Please do roll call.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Here.
Councilmember Rush?
Here.
Councilmember Simmons?
Present.
Mayor Protem Tesari?
Here.
Mayor Bootsma?
Here. invocation will be led by Pastor Tim Eaton from the Edgewater Lutheran.
Please join me in bowing our heads. The city mayor and members of our city council, we begin with prayer. Gracious God, the eyes fall over to you. You give them their food at the proper time. You open your hands and satisfy the desires of every living thing. Gracious God, we give thanks and praise to you that indeed you give to us all the things that we need for body and for life, but also we continue to recognize that and ask that you continue to put your hand of blessing upon not just our city, but also its people. Lord, that you would provide all the things that they need, of course, house and home, food and clothing, but also I pray that you would give them peace of mind, that you would give them hope for the future, that you would give them peace in their households amongst their spouses and also with their children. Or that indeed our city can continue to be one of wonderful peace. We thank you. We're for the great diversity of people that we have here. We thank you for the wonderful peace and brotherhood we enjoy upon it. We thank you also, Lord, that you are the one who is the giver of wisdom and educated wisdom to King Solomon, so you have done with our esteemed leader, sir, for creating and continuing blessings with that and creating and giving us diligence in our meeting tonight that you handle here upon us. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance will be led by Mayor Protem Joe Tesari.
Place your hands over your hearts and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the Eleanor Roosevelt High School Mustang Football Volunteers. And who's going to, yeah, Daniella going to give the report on it? First off, I say what a great event. I mean, what a great event.
Thank you, Mayor, and everybody, councilmembers and members of our wonderful city. I just wanted to give you a quick, a quick recap and a share with you from the waste cleanup and paper shredding event. The event was held on July 16th. It was from 8:00 a.m. to noon during intermediate school. We anticipated five roll-offs, one paper shredder, and one electronic waste truck. We had coordinated with Eleanor Roosevelt High School football team to volunteer. We had asked for 20 of their students to participate. We anticipated for 10 per two and a half hour shift. It was a hot day. It was well over 100 degrees in that heat, so we wanted to make sure that they got their breaths. And here are a few photos from the event. You can see our congressman, Representative Linda, traveling to present and doing our first one resident who went to participate. They were there at 7:00 in the morning and they waited until 8:00 p.m. to begin. And here are some more of the ones and just kind of how the event flowed over to our E.R.H. volunteers. At the end of the event, which lasted, it's actually until 3:00 p.m., about 12:00 and continued to do cleanup with the items that were left. We ended the event with a total tonnage of 24.31 tons of waste, which equated to 12 roll-off trucks. 12.82 tons of electronic waste, which equated to three e-waste trucks. And two shredding trucks, which equals 13,500 pounds of paper shredding. And presentant of the event did have seven waste management staff, including Linda, who was there, sorry, for the entirety of the event, which ended at 6:30 to 3:00 p.m. and should give in the audience today. So thank you for all your work, Linda, for organizing this wonderful event. City manager Michelle Nissen was present. My I.N.S.L. was present until 1:00 p.m. And I think the stars of the event were actually our E.R.H. volunteers. We had four parents there and then ended up with 25 football team volunteers. 18 of them were there for two and a half to four hours, three for five, two volunteers were there for six hours, and another two ended up for seven hours. Now, my boys worked hard in the heat loading our residents and unloading their residents' trash and holding hands. And calling on, it was a great event. And we look forward to the next one, which will be November 5th of this year at, I'm sorry, at Meriden Intermediate. So we're definitely planning for a large turnout like we had this year, which was our next time, which was much more than we anticipated we did. So thank you very much. And I don't know if there is enough as I've found with football team, but maybe this can be come forward. They were unable to make it this evening.
I just got to say, really, everybody really pitched in and they worked hard. They weren't just there standing around. They really worked hard. The staff, waste management, everybody was, and it was warm. And really, they did a heck of a job. I cannot say enough on the volunteers and everybody involved. And it was, ran very smooth. Actually, the biggest breaks were when we had to change roll-offs because we had to kind of shut it down and let trucks come in. But that was the biggest, and, you know, really, I don't, I don't even think waste management anticipated that much to be picked up, you know, so, great job, great job.
Mayor Bootsma, if I could add, this is the first event of its type that we've held here in the city. So we've had a lot of firsts this last couple of years. This is, again, one of those firsts for the city. And the turnout and response was tremendous. People were already asking, when's the next one? When's the next one? So in interviewing some of the participants, we're really happy to provide this. This is a service that's provided as part of our contract with waste management. They're a fantastic partner. And we will be doing this twice a year moving forward.
Yeah, because I know a lot of people say, oh, I forgot about it, or, you know, you know, can I come after 12 o'clock, you know? Well, we had to shut it down because, you know, otherwise we would have never been out of there.
Right. We, we, we already had two of our public works staff, Joe Endrowan and Craig Bradshaw, actually came at noon to, to help continue to service some of the vehicles that were in the queue, that were, that were upset, you know? You have to cut it off at some point, so, but that is part of the reason why the event went until 3:00 o'clock because we were still taking some late, latecomers that had been waiting a long time and then doing all the cleanup in the parking lot. But, like I said, we, we will continue to offer this service moving forward twice a year. And this allows us to, well, reduce the instances of illegal dumping in the community. As you can see, there were a lot of mattresses. I don't know if you've noticed that in the photos, so, anyway, we will continue to promote this for November 5th.
Yeah, and the Roosevelt High School Volunteers football team did a heck of a job.
They're the best.
Agreed.
They are a good group of kids. I'm really proud that you're in the city of Eastville.
Yeah, they, they were a fantastic group of young men, and we couldn't have done it without them, honestly.
Exactly. We couldn't do it without them.
They eat a lot of pizza, though, which we were happy to provide.
Thank you.
I did have a quick question.
Yes, Clint.
Thank you. Great job, great turnout, obviously needed, so I'm excited to hear that we're going to be doing this continuously. I did have a question about the e-waste. There is a lot of it there, and this is also a personal question, too. And I know that I have some computers, for instance, that have died in the past and, or that are dead, and I still have them sitting around because I haven't done my due diligence. But is there, are there any best practices associated with turning in of computers, for instance, hard drives, dismantling them prior to dropping them off? Or is that part of the service that the equipment is dismantled to a point that personal information can't be used?
Councilmember Lorimer, that is a great question, and honestly, that is not part of the scope of services for e-waste. It's really paramount for the party that has the computer to scrub it before they turn it in. Most people, unfortunately, will literally just take a hammer to the hard drive if they are not tech savvy and know how to scrub it, or if the computer is already disabled or has a virus, they'll just, they'll just kind of break it up. But all residents, as part of their waste management contract, do also get two free bulky item pickups per year. And that is something that they need to schedule in advance of their regular pickup day. But for those folks that missed the event, they do still have an opportunity to dispose of two bulky items. I'm not sure that, you know, your laptops are bulky items, but we can certainly see if, if that would qualify for waste management if you want to dispose of them.
That's you.
We actually have a mayor and councilwoman staff. We really partner with a reputable company that collects the e-waste. That's what we kind of say, we, you know, do the fundraising. We are responsible for that. So we make sure, like Michelle says, we do advise customers to make sure they clean up all the visioning they want to, you know, destroy, but it does get disassembled in different compartments because there's metal, there's different components to each electronic item. So once we collect it, we get certificates and we clean up the items that are properly disposed. Does that answer your question?
It does. I, I've just, I've heard horror stories of these things being after the fact, identity theft taking place because it wasn't properly disposed of. So I was just curious if this was something that we need to make the residents aware of when they're dropping it off? Or if there really is no concern because it is taken care of by this reputable company? That's what I was asking.
Well, I think it's cleanup, or before the next cleanup, I mean, I think one of the reasons why this event was extremely successful is two years ago. We think as soon as we marked calendar, they started promoting it on all our social media outlets. And not to mention, we send out information to the customers through mail. And I was at the end of the line, and I was almost going to be at the other reception. And so at 12:00, we had to say, you know, no more. And that's, and we also provide the information with the different service options. And we do indicate that they could dispose of electronic waste, but as a whole, I don't think they're as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move to item 32, employee introduction.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I would like to make a small correction on there. It's really not employee introduction. This is our WRCOG fellow. If you recall, a few months ago, I had announced to council that we had applied for a fellowship opportunity with WRCOG, which is Western Riverside Council of Governments. This is a new program for WRCOG, and very thankfully, we were one of the recipients of a fellow. And that is Christine, who is here with us tonight. Christine, if you want to stand up. So I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce you to Christine Jamor, I'm going to, I apologize if I pronounce it wrong, Jamor Allen. Christine is our WRCOG fellow who was placed with the city of Eastville in July. She recently graduated this past June with a bachelor's degree in public policy from UC Riverside. Her policy focus areas were social, cultural, family policies, as well as political institutions and processes. During her time at UCR, she was a student ambassador for the School of Public Policy, as well as the Office of Advancement and Development. In addition, she worked on campus as a resident advisor in the campus apartments for her peers. During her free time, she interns at the mayor's office in Riverside, conducting research for communities of excellence in nutrition, physical activity, and obesity prevention project focused on the east side. She is currently working on various health-oriented issues and quality of life projects here in Eastville. She hopes to bring new ideas to Eastville to increase community pride and engagement. In the future, she plans to apply to graduate school to pursue her master's degree in social work or public administration. So we're very pleased to have Christine with us. She'll be with us through the end of March, approximately 30 hours a week. She's doing a fantastic job. Some of the things that she's working on currently that you will see on upcoming agenda items are roadway adoption program, Tree City USA. I thought that would make you very happy, Mayor Protem. Tree City USA and, and other quality of life programs and policies. So with that, I'd like to again introduce Christine. We're very honored to have her onboard.
Welcome aboard.
Do you have any questions for Christine?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 33, Eastville Community Foundation update.
Good evening, honorable councilmen. Mayor Bootsma, I'm here standing in today because there's no board members available for the update. The director is second to come. Fairly, we have been on base at this point. There has been a golf tournament being selected for October 14th, Friday. That is the next major fundraising event that we are hosting. There has been an update with the banner program. Company has selected a representative that will actually reach out to us and communicate, so they are now working on getting a faster response time and more adequate way of getting things up and communication back and forth to the community foundation and the company that provides the management. That's all I have. I've got national representatives right now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
How cares? Student representative is not here, so we'll move to five, public comment. Our first speaker will be Cindy Qualp.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cindy Qualp, and I am the member watching for the neighborhood of the Eastville community park. I was very disappointed with the outcome of the last month's Holy City Commission meeting in regards to the parking permit ordinance. There were only three out of the five commissioners present. Thought that was a bit unfair. That's nothing as important as this, with the absence of the other two. Further evaluation of departmental ordinance was denied due to potential costs associated with the program. I really do think that there are other resources that may be able to be used to reduce the cost of the program. For example, the volunteer code enforcement, reserve deputies or reserve, I'm sorry, volunteer officers, et cetera. And yes, of course, there is a cost associated with public safety. As we know already, I have done my own research and have seen in different cities such as Vermont that have parking ordinances and the reduced crime is 20%. I think that's huge. In some neighborhoods, which is mine, due to the high amount of vehicles parked on the street, it is very difficult to determine who really blocks cars and who doesn't. My neighbors all think this would help significantly and also give residents a piece of mind. How easy would it be for law enforcement to be able to control the neighborhood and pick out resident, resident, hmm, something's off with that one? I really think that the city of Eastville could benefit by this parking ordinance. I would also like to add, oh, hold on, I'm sorry. I would also like to add that this ordinance should be going out of the law. I'm not just saying this, but if you play time.
Thank you. No other speakers, so we'll move to consent calendars. Is there any item that needs to be discussed or pulled?
So move. Second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Bootsma?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Move to item eight, city council business, eight one, community development block grant supplemental agreement.
Good evening, honorable, honorable mayor and city council members. This evening, we have CDVG, which is Community Development Block Grant Agreement, the supplemental agreement, that we have been doing since incorporation in conjunction with County EDA. Year after year, EDA received funding from housing, federal housing agency, and distributed to municipal agencies to take care of a couple of items. Number one is to take care of community scholarship, community services for community, the low-income communities pretty much. And also to develop ADA sidewalks, ADA improvements, curb ramps in the area. So year after year, we have been coming to the city council for this supplemental agreement. Approximately, we receive about $130,000, $140,000 per year. This year, we receive $133,000 a year. City council in the past few years have, has decided to have 15% of this total amount, which is this year is going to be $19,000 for community services. This agreement is just agreeing that the city of Eastville is going to be part of this program. Number one project is the Eastville Pedestrian Accessibility Project Phase Two, which is in conjunction with Fire Station 31. It's adding the sidewalks and curb ramps along Selby and Chandler Avenue. That is in the amount $111,000. The second item is youth recreational scholarship program in the amount $19,000. And this program is managed and administered by Eastville Community Foundations through a variety of programs. They have scholarship for the community. That concludes staff recommendation, staff presentation recommendation is to have city council authorize city manager to execute the supplemental agreement with CDVG, with County EDA. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
I'll move approval. Second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Bootsma?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Move to item nine, city manager, city staff reports.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. Just a few announcements for you. There is a request for proposal circulating right now for economic development consultant services. That closes tomorrow. We have solicited several firms, and we're waiting for the proposals to come in at this time. We also want to, I don't have any finance staff here, but I'd like to share that the city of Eastville received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. So yes, this is the fourth year in a row that we have received this prestigious award. So I just want to compliment, just want to compliment all the staff that have put in numerous hours and effort on the CAFR report. Also want to share that we recently received an update from HDL that does our sales tax reporting and our property tax reporting. And I'm very happy to announce for everyone that owns a house in Eastville, as well as all of our real estate agents in the room, that the second quarter 2016 report shows that the Eastville median sales price is up 6.25% over the first quarter of 2016. So in 2016 first quarter, the median price was $480,000. And second quarter of 16, excuse me, yes, that's correct, 480 for quarter one. Quarter two of 16 is $510,000. So our housing prices are going up, which is great news for everyone. I'd also like to remind all of the council members and invite the citizens that are here this evening that we do have, well, JCSD has their anniversary on Saturday. You can find all of the details on the city's website. And tomorrow night is, again, concerts in the park, so you guys can all come out to 65th Street at Harada Park.
Is that tomorrow or Friday?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I have, I have Friday on the brain. Yes, I still have vacation on the brain. So Friday night, Friday night, you can come on out and enjoy the festivities at Harada Park. And that's all I have.
Mayor and councilmembers, a quick update on construction progress. We have a couple of projects in town, which is in the, in a very critical part, which is Archibald between 65th and Limonite. That is part of the Providence Business Park on the west side of Archibald, between Dr. Horton and Andy Dye's Dairy. And the construction right now is going on for another 60 days or so. They're putting water line only to Limonite, and after that, they're going to put curb and gutter on their side, on the west side, and widen a little portion on the east side up to Limonite Avenue. So construction is going on. And also on Harrison and Citrus, there's construction on the gas line, high-pressure gas line. We've been watching the construction to make sure that all the property control, dust control, and cleanup is being followed. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. I apologize for my tardiness. I was on a hazmat incident in Rubido. I just wanted to give you a quick, quick update on Station 31. We're still moving very well on Station 31. Windows were delivered, so that stopped the tie-up on getting it wrapped and getting stucco going, so they've got the windows are, are being installed. We're busy picking out interior furnishings as far as colors, carpet, flooring, cabinets, countertops, so we're, we're busy doing that. So we're looking good for, for get it done on time. Sometime in November is what we're looking at. So we're, we're looking good there. The new engine 27 is still at the vendor, and as soon as it's done and available, we'll present that to the city and, and get it up and running, and we'll go from there. That's all I have for you tonight. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Are you going with the standard blue chairs?
I think we're going to go brown or gray. I, I have one of my female captains that's helping me with all the interior stuff, so.
Honorable mayor, city council, police department update. This week, we concluded a Office of Traffic Safety Grant Program where we specifically targeted speeding within the city. And we successfully issued 93 citations to vehicles that were traveling in excess of the speed, which, again, our goal there is to create awareness about speeding and also lower the number of traffic collisions that occur. And so far this calendar year, we're on pace to do that through these efforts. My staff, which includes all of the deputies assigned to Eastville, last week participated in a yearly active shooter training that we conduct. You may be aware that we rotate this around to different communities that, that I oversee. Obviously, we've done that here in Eastville. This year's events were in, in an adjacent city. But of note that all of the staff here in city of Eastville who work on a day-to-day basis have now gone through that training, which is outstanding in the sense that it really creates an environment of scenario-based training that gets them to think about what to do in a real-life event if that were to happen. We're hoping that that never happens, but our readiness level is extremely high. As you're aware, there have been some significant investigations that have occurred here in Eastville in the last couple of days. But of particular note, I wanted to point out one thing to the council and everybody that's here tonight. Yesterday, we had a very lengthy investigation that required a street closure for several hours. And your volunteer staff, which included two citizen volunteers, manned posts for excess of 10 hours each in order to relieve the police officers to go back out into the field and conduct routine calls for service and, and that sort of thing. So we continue to utilize our volunteers very effectively, and obviously, we, we appreciate their support. And then the last thing I, I wanted to comment on was, over the last few weeks, we've had some community members, specifically from Eastville, who requested to come to the station where the deputies report to each day. And as a showing of generosity and support, brought them just all kinds of food items and, and cards of support, enough to fill up a couple of tables in our briefing room almost every day. And that is a testament to the work that goes on here in the community's support, and I just wanted to highlight that to the council. That's all I have.
Do you have any names?
Thank you.
Any names of the volunteers? Any names of the volunteers?
It was Buzz was one of them, and the other one's name is Bob Navar.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mayor Bootsma, I apologize for the interruption. I have one more, actually, two more announcements for you. If I could remind the council and invite all of the citizens to National Night Out, which is August ninth. Typically, we do that in partnership with the city of Norco and Yerupa Valley, and it does rotate to different cities, so this year, it is in the city of Norco. So again, that's August ninth, and the details can be found on the city's calendar. Also, would like to point out that we do have some Eleanor Roosevelt High School students that are here, so maybe if we could circle back around to the presentation of the Certificate of Appreciation. And then lastly, I would like to take a moment and thank our city clerk, Mark Donahue. He is moving on to bigger and better jobs, and we're going to miss him. It's been a pleasure working with him, and just want to take a moment to say thank you for your hard, hard work.
Thank you, Mark.
But Mark is remaining as a resident in Eastvale forever.
I know, we might have to chase him out.
I'll still be around. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have the council join me to make a presentation.
The city of Eastvale presents this certificate of appreciation to the Eleanor Roosevelt High School football volunteers for volunteering their time at free residential cleanups and paper shredding events. And I really can't say enough how grateful you guys were, and I hope for the rest of the volunteer, we really appreciate all the hard work you guys have done. It was awesome, you know, but you guys did a heck of a job, and we really appreciate it. Eric, this is Eric Brooks. I see you're at Roosevelt High School. Yeah.
All of the Eleanor Roosevelt High School students from the football team that volunteered will be getting a letter from City Hall so that they can log the volunteer hours as part of their portfolio for college.
Okay, we'll go to council comments. We'll start with Clint.
Thank you. Couple things since the last meeting. League of California Cities sit on a couple of committees there at the county level, one of which is a golf committee. There will be a golf tournament. That's the fundraiser for the division, and that'll be taking place on Columbus Day. So people should have time off. That's the thinking behind it. And there will be more than just one option. There will be alternatives to golf this year, so to bring in the non-golfers as well. SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, it will be dark in August summertime. However, yesterday participated in the Housing Summit Steering Committee, and that will be taking place in October, so excited about that. A lot of interesting discussions there, talking about the housing crisis in Southern California. Also, tomorrow, I am joining a new board as well, and that will be with the YMCA Norco Corona, so that will be kicking off tomorrow, and the sphere of influence coming over here into Eastvale as well. And I did want to say, Mark, we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Joe?
Actually, I wanted to bring up the Neighborhood Watch. I see Commissioner Hook back, I see Commissioner Hook back there. About the Neighborhood Watch, he's not paying attention. Hey, Commissioner Hook.
Chris.
Chris? Hey, regarding the Neighborhood Watch that you got, the meeting that you guys had, was that a two-to-one denial or unanimous vote?
I used, I'm not the Neighborhood Watch, but the.
Yeah, my apologies, yeah, the parking permits.
Correct, sir. There was myself and the other commissioners, and a very similar commission, why it does it, there was some hours spent on it, and we were voting two to one to not provide it.
Because I'd like to see it brought up again and discussed, but I know that'll probably take somebody from who was opposed to it to ask for it back.
I think we can just bring it to council if we want it.
Why don't we do that?
My suggestion, Mr. Mayor, was just to bring this matter just right to the council level, and then you can have a discussion on it if you want to send it back to the public safety as well too, or you can make a decision on it.
Okay, I'd like to see that come to us.
I would only, I just recommend that, like, if something comes from Plan Commission, the history and the minutes, everything from the public safety meeting be included in that, because it just has a history.
The other thing I had was vector control. Thank you, Commissioner Hook. There's going to be a spray on Friday, the 29th. They're going to be spraying for mosquitoes, our typical area down by the river. At our last meeting regarding West Nile, there have been two birds that have tested positive in our district. Forty-three percent of all the positive birds, all the birds that tested positive for West Nile were in Sacramento County, so they're getting hit really hard right now. It's been pretty light for us. The first positive human case has been discovered in LA County. Encephalitis is resurging. There's only two counties in California, however, that have shown, had any positive tests, and that's Riverside and Kern. Zika cases, there's been over 1,300 in the U.S. Eighty-six of them have been in California. Six have been in our district. Of those six, five have been analyzed and confirmed that they were negative, and one is still pending analysis. And they also had the first confirmed death of a person from Zika in the United States, and that was in Utah. And he was an elderly person. They're attributing it to Zika, but obviously, he was somewhat infirm, but he managed to transfer the virus to his son. So that's the first known transmission of Zika from human to human in the world, and it was in Utah.
And it's different types of bugs, right? Transmit the virus?
It's, Zika is carried by the Cuviq mosquito, and it's a tropical mosquito. It's not indigenous to North America, but it's obviously coming here, primarily, the virus is coming through people that are traveling to tropical places and being infected, and they're coming back and transmitting it to other people through sex. That's why this case is unique, because it was father and son, and they're unsure how the virus was transmitted. That's all I had on that note, and thanks, Mark. You will be missed. I'll see you in Rosemead.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Dicky?
Well, this past week, I was elected to be the vice chair of the Parks Commission. Thanks, Clint. And what's a good thing? But the Parks Commission with the JCSD, and I'm so proud of JCSD and their reports given back to us in the committee, the commission, and they do so much for to make Eastvale what Eastvale is today. And the park recovered very well from the picnic in the park, and they're working diligently on our common trail areas. I mean, you go down any street, and you always see workers out there doing a great job, and they, they put pride into our community. And you don't really see graffiti, whereas in some communities, especially where we used to work, you see it all the time. You don't see that here in Eastvale, and it's very, we should be very proud of JCSD. Picnic is in the park is the other, I mean, the concerts in the park, 65th Street, concerts is another great event that they put on, and we're so fortunate to have JCSD as our partner in Eastvale. That's why it's never good to leave Eastvale. Don't you dare. And Mark, I don't know what I'm going to do without you. You've been my right-hand man since I started, and that's been a long time ago, but not too much longer.
Two months, a whole two months.
And Captain Horton, I just want to reiterate the pride I have in the community citizens that step up, especially Ms. McIntyre, that have rallied, the people on Facebook, to show support for our law enforcement, public safety, our fire station. We had the luncheon that Michelle had put on. It was very, very well received. I'm proud of everything we do as a city collectively to show our support for those who serve us. Thank you very much. The other thing, we have a licensing event coming up August the 13th for animal control, animal services. It's going to be at our City Hall on August the 13th from nine to 11 o'clock. You come there, you don't need to bring your, don't, don't need to bring your pets, I don't think, but just bring the information so that you can renew your license.
I, when I went down there, I didn't have to. You just bring, they send you an invoice, and that's all the information they need.
But you can do this at City Hall. This is our City Hall outreach, and it'd be good. They came to my door one time, and they had all the information. It was so good. But I want to thank every, all the residents attending the city council meeting tonight, especially my daughter Erin, thank you very much, and my granddaughter Dylan, and your pop is up here working. But thanks, everybody. That's all I have.
Okay, Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank the chamber and Mayor Protem Tesari for his wonderful emceeing of the installation event. It was good food and a great event, so thank you to anybody from the chamber. RCTC is dark this month, but we did have an ad hoc committee for the I-15 project, so that is moving forward. We spent about an hour and a half trying to decide where to put the operations center, and I lobbied for Eastvale, but I guess there's not a lot of property left over here. Plus, I don't think they pay taxes anyway, so I'm probably all for not. But that's really all we talked about. That project is, is moving forward pretty quickly, though, so once the state Route 91 concludes, hopefully, second to third quarter next year, and I know there's been a lot of closures, construction will start soon after that on the I-15 from the 60 down to Calico, so keep everybody up to date.
How long do they figure that project will last?
It's an 18-month construction schedule. Yeah, but it's going to be, it's, it's a shorter project, and it's less intense, because other than the entrances and exits to the toll lanes, everything's hopefully going to be done within the median, so there's no right-of-way acquisition. Everything's done within that big, weeded landscape area that you see in the middle of 15, with the exception of the bridge over the river, but we're working through those issues, so. Supposed to save 39 minutes. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, I, you know, I want to thank the chamber for the great event they had on the Tuesday, and I was able to join Norco with the Day of the Cowboy on Saturday. Got to do a little cow chipping toss, you know, but, no, I didn't, I didn't, I couldn't shovel it fast enough, so. And I'd really like to invite everybody to the JCSD 60th Anniversary this Saturday at between 10 and 12, and I think the, if you're going, they would like people to call with reservations. And the Town Hall meeting is next Tuesday, August the 2nd, and the National Night Out will be on the 9th at, from 5 to 7. So really, a lot of events coming. Please have the city join us and really get support, even though the National Night Out is in Norco, we, they supported us very well last year, so we really need to support them this year. And that's pretty much, and Mark, you know, be careful when you're walking around town, you know, so, you know. Thanks for the time you're here. Thanks for all the help.
I forgot, thank you, Mark, for all your help in keeping me on my toes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, meeting's adjourned.